Rephrase me. Holy God, we pause before the work of this city council tonight to confess, to give thanks, to share our burdens, and to pray for our city and these city councillors. We confess the ways we have become weary and worn by a political process more often marked by rancor than by grace. We confess that we too grow resigned to the way things are and the systems that refuse to change. Holy One, tonight, save us all from re resignation. Remind us all of our power to seek the good welfare of Poplar Bluff. We acknowledge the many decisions they carry into this work. Be with them, oh God, tonight. We give thanks for the communities that support them, the spouses, the friends, and the neighbors and loved ones who make sacrifices so that they may be here tonight. Bless them. We pray for all our elected officials entrusted with the holy calling of public service. Keep them pure in heart. We pray for Ed DeGares, our mayor, and all the city council members here tonight. Give them clear understanding to act. Give them wisdoms to speak wisely and give them courage to act when action is called forth. We pray for the residents of our city and the constituents they serve. We pray for all who are seeking full, meaningful employment. We pray for work. We pray for all those seeking education. We pray for powerful teachers in our community. We pray for all those seeking peace and justice. We pray for our police officers and our firefighters. Keep them from harm's way. Through your Spirit's presence in all our lives, train us all to work for justice. Holy One, bless the work that is before this council tonight. May every decision they make, every phone call they pick up, every email they respond, be done with generosity of spirit. Remind them of the truth of Jeremiah, that in the welfare of the city, we find our own welfare. In all they do and all they say, may they seek the prosperity of Poplar Bluff. Tonight, we know you by many names. I pray for this council in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Here.
And Mayor DeGares.
Here.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at the previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Consent agenda, the items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. Any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so. Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda is provided. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have the action required items. Bill number 7963, city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a daycare facility for up to 10 children in a single family of residents for property at 202 East Henry Street.
Move for first reading of 7963, caption only.
Second. Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Rhonda Moss for the operation of a daycare center at 202 East Henry Street in the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of bill number 7963 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Rhonda Moss for the operation of a daycare center at 202 East Henry Street in Poplar Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption of 7963.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number 7963 passes. Bill number 7964, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the sales contract between the city of Poplar Bluff and First Missouri State Bank.
Move for first reading of 7964, under caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to a real estate purchase agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and First Missouri State Bank.
Move for second reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading of bill number 7964. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to a real estate purchase agreement between the city of Poplar Bluff and First Missouri State Bank.
Move for adoption of bill number 7964.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7964 is adopted. Bill number 7965, the city council will take action on an ordinance destroying antiquated records from the planning department. Move for first reading of 7965, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the planning department of the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading of 7965, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the destruction of antiquated records by the planning department of the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move to adopt 7965.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number 7965 passed. Bill number 7966, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the MODOT Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, grant application for the Pike Creek Bridge and sidewalk extension along PP Highway.
Move for first reading of bill number 7966, by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the MODOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant Application for the Pike Creek Bridge and sidewalk extension along PP Highway.
Move for second reading of 7966, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the city of Poplar Bluff and Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission for the administration of the MODOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant Application for the Pike Creek Bridge and sidewalk extension along PP Highway.
Move to adopt 7966.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7966 passed. Bill number 7967, the city council will take action on an ordinance repealing section 210 of the Code of Ordinances entitled offenses in adopting and enacting a new section 210 of the Code of Ordinances entitled offenses.
Move for first reading of 7967, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance adopting and enacting a new chapter 210, offenses of the Code of City Ordinances of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, and providing for the repeal of existing code, chapter 210, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Move for second reading of bill number 7967, by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance adopting and enacting a new chapter 210, offenses of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Poplar Bluff, Butler County, Missouri, and providing for the repeal of existing code, chapter 210, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective.
Move to adopt 7967.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7967 passed. Bill number 7968, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the McLean Trail project.
Move for first reading of 7968, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Frontal Barter Concreters, Inc., for the construction of the McLean Walking Trail project.
Move for second reading of 7968.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Frontal Barter Concreters, Inc., for the construction of the McLean Walking Trail project.
Move for adoption of 7968.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7968 passed. Bill number 7969, the city council will take action on an ordinance adopting the 2017 budget for the city of Poplar Bluff and municipal utilities.
Move for reading of 79, first reading for 7969, in the caption only.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the city of Poplar Bluff and municipal utilities for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017.
Move for second reading of bill number 7969, by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the city of Poplar Bluff and municipal utilities for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2017, and ending December 31st, 2017.
Move to adopt 7969.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Bill number 7969.
Before we vote on it, I'd like the city manager to explain a couple of the changes he made in the budget so that people would understand it.
The budget you were presented the first, the last workshop meeting had a deficit of $173,761. There was actually a formula coding error in the budget of $33,000, which actually put the deficit at $207,000. The budget you have in front of you tonight has a deficit of $237,758. That also includes $99,000 in lease payments for the building City Hall's in and the building the police department's in, and the lease to the college for the 911 center. In addition, in this budget I presented to you tonight, we add a dental insurance back in for the city to pay the employees portion. Three years ago, up until two year, up until last year, the city paid 100% of the employee and 2/3 of the dependent. This current budget we're in for 2016, they paid 100% of the employee and half of the dependents. And in the 2017 budget, we budgeted for 100% of the employee and the employees will pay 100% for their dependent coverage. Budget also has the equivalent of one starting salary and benefits for a police officer put back in it. And as I said, that leaves us with a $237,000 deficit budget. We made a few adjustments on some revenues and a couple of adjustments in the expense items in the police department. And if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'd like to also make a comment to thank Mr. Massingham. A lot of people probably doesn't realize this, but when he first gets the budget, I know he's already cut probably over half a million dollars out of it before he ever even sent us the first draft of it. And that's hard to do when we're running everything and doing the best possible work we can do for our citizens.
Are there comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
No. I was gonna ask, I thought he was gonna ask a question.
Pardon me?
I thought you were gonna ask a question. I was just waiting. So, when you say the equivalent of a starting salary, police officer, are you talking about actually laying off someone?
Actually, right now, we've, we've got an opening because one of our officers has gone on a leave for military duty. So, we haven't filled that position. So, we don't fill that right now, there wouldn't be anybody actually lose their job. Now, that person will be back in, I think, August or September. At that point, I guess we'll have to reevaluate what we want to do then, or we wait to the last minute, but...
With the headlines, we've gotten a lot of phone calls, and I just want to be clear because I can't, I can't support us laying off any city employees if we can cut expenses somewhere else. I mean, you either have to have more income or less expenses. And to me, our employees are our most valuable assets, next of course, the citizens. But we should try and find a way that we can cut something besides an employee. And I just want to be clear that this council is not, or I am not, supporting cutting an employee. And sometimes it gets misunderstood, and I just want to make sure that we're clear that by passing this, that we're not cutting any employees.
Well, we are cutting one employee in the municipal court.
Okay.
Street department actually has two openings, so we won't fill those. Planning department has an opening. We won't fill that right now. But the one in court, you know, if this budget's approved, it doesn't have that position in there. We have budgeted some money for part-time for that department to help during court days. Whether we can find anybody to work those few hours, I'm not sure, but...
So, we've actually laid someone off in the court?
Yes.
And that's already happened in '16, and so it's just not gonna be in '17?
Well, I mean, they're still working here right now, but...
They're still here now, okay. I just want to be clear, because...
But they won't have a full-time job then?
Correct.
And there's not any other expenses to cut that employee? Because it's very expensive to hire and train someone and then find your short and have to hire... I noticed this month that we spent over $15,000 at the Coliseum on temporary employees, and that's a lot of money. I mean, you can put on an employee for what you're paying for temporary. So, just not micromanaging, but just things that pop out at me that I have questions on.
I mean, I feel like on the organizational part, we've got it down to bare bones, so...
I think we do, pretty much. But, I mean, just trying to see where else, you know, it's just the feedback from the public is they want, with the police, we support the blue, we want more boots on the street, less administration, is what the public is saying. The council, and I guess we're in agreement, we're not supporting cutting police officers by any means. That was never our intent. It just got blown up because of the headlines, of course. And, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we're not in favor of cutting any employees, but we also know we have to have a balanced budget.
We have to have a balanced budget. And so, that's, I just want to make sure that we're clear and it's not misunderstood by the public that, of where we're standing on it.
And with those cuts, I mean, this balance, as you know, is still not balanced.
Right.
Our budget's not balanced.
So, then, do we need to find those cuts yet tonight before we pass it?
I don't know where else we cut, other than employees and salary. I mean, benefits, that's 80% of our budget, so...
But we do have reserve that balances out the budget for legal standpoint. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, we've got reserves, so...
And we'd only be dipping into the reserves of the $237,000.
Yes, and like I said, 99,000 of that is, you know, it's not gonna be an ongoing cost forever.
Right. But it will be a good portion of '17, because if we started today, we're not gonna be in that building. It's gonna take a while to build it.
Right. Yeah, so it'll definitely, definitely be part of 2017, or most, all of 2017 budget.
I think it's gonna eat up all of '17, for sure. Yeah.
What is the $20,000 in the cemetery? I assume it's a piece of equipment for $19,000.
Are you looking at...
Raising their budget from 244 to 263, page 24.
When I look at it, I assume it's about time for them to get some new, some more lawnmowers. It's gonna go through them pretty quick.
$19,000.
It's three lawnmowers, the $19,000 is.
Are you talking on capital or...
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'm looking at the general fund 101 cemetery, but you can go back to the page.
Yes, that $19,000 is for, I forgot how many, but it's those big zero radius, zero turn radius commercial mowers. I think the ones have been out there for quite a few years, so... And I mean, that's capital money. It can't be used for general fund purposes, but...
Also, I'd like to make comment, you know, on the phone calls we got, I love to hear from citizens and their input. One I didn't appreciate, it came on the answering machine, it was just unknown, had never enough. Tried to call everybody back, and they started out by using vulgar language over the answering machine, and my grandkids are at my house all the time and heard that. So, you know, if you want to talk that way to me in person, that's fine. Don't do it where my grandkids got put up for that. And also, that, you know, Mr. Massingham, like I said, you know, saved quite a bit of it. I know the departments turn in money, they don't spend all of their budget, so that $237,000 will be less than that at the end of the year. A lot of suggestions we got, that I got from citizens were, like Ms. McVeigh said, pretty well, getting close to micromanaging from the different departments, which is what Mr. Massingham, we pass them on to him, and some suggestions, you know, he may be able to implement some, he may not. That's up to him, you know, if we be hearing the same things, and sure he'll do what we tell him to do. But that would be, we've got a fine line there, we've got to watch the knot cross, because we employed him to do that, and we've got to trust him to do those things.
You know, this budget's just a tool that we use to forecast the year. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it has to be spent. We can, it's kind of late in the game for us not to pass the budget now. What we can do is monitor the expenses as we go and see where we're at later on in the year. And hopefully, with some guidance and some meticulous looking at the expenses that happened throughout '17, we can make this budget even stronger than it is right now, maybe even better. Revenue solves a lot of problems. Maybe our revenue gets a little better next year in '17 than it is in '16. Who knows yet? Could be worse. If revenue goes down a little bit, then we really have to look at our expenses. But it's up to us to monitor how the expenses are being done throughout the course of the year. And later on, fourth quarter, if it gets tight, maybe we put a spending freeze on it, I don't know. But we use this as a tool, it's kind of like a crescent wrench, just tighten it or loosen it as we go along, and make sure that we're just abiding by the tool that's given to us that we accept tonight and go forward.
Well said, Councilman. I appreciate Mark sitting down. I brought in some old budgets from 2010, 11, and 12, and we laid them side by side to '16 and '17, and it's not drastically different. A lot of the thing is because of the revenue. And again, it's kind of hard to judge on that. It comes in in waves, so this could be the low side, there could be a windfall coming later. We do have some of that money coming in from the cell phone settlement in March. We have new businesses coming every day, and I appreciate the count, the department heads. I know it's been a very difficult time for them to have to go down and tweak it, but if we can salvage all the employees and try to cut on the benefits or expenses and try to hold tight through '17, I really feel like we're, we're on the bubble. It's gonna get better. It's just, we knew for years, this, going into this, it was gonna be really tight this year, and everybody pulling together, not working against each other, I think we can come through this in victory.
No, I appreciate the council. I mean, you all took this, as you should, very serious. I've either spoke on the phone or met with each and every one of you in the last two weeks, and I appreciate your input, and, like I said, we can always make adjustments to the budget anytime we need to.
Nothing further? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye, yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill number 7969 passed. Nothing for a closed session. Move on to the city manager's report.
Really, just one item. I know several meetings ago, the downtown Poplar Bluff Board presented their strategic plan to the council. Actually, at the last meeting, it was passed to vote on. It wasn't put on this session as a voting item. We kind of feel like there really doesn't need to be an ordinance passed on this. I guess really, if we could just have a, if you all are in support of the downtown strategic plan, just a voice vote or a consensus that you do support this plan. Anything monetary that the city does that's in this plan, we would have to come back to council, either this coming year or the next year. Basically, I think they just want to make sure that the council is in favor of their strategic plan, so, you know, if you all could just kind of give me a consensus tonight so they can move forward with their plan. And like I said, I don't think it ties you any monetary cost in the plan, those were just suggestions.
I think they put a lot of hard work and effort and thought into it, but I cannot support it as a whole. There's parts of it that I would be like, I would have to change. I appreciate everything they've done, but I just, there's just parts of it that I can't
One of the main things that people brought to me was the slogan that I didn't see it that way, but there's some negative connotation on it, so if that's in there, it shouldn't be tied with the downtown or with the city of Poplar Bluff in any way. Just the slogan needs to be changed in some way. Rest of it, it's a lot of new people, new ideas and things to make things going, showed a lot of new interest in the downtown, and I liked, a lot of the ideas, I may not agree with all of them, but I'll agree with myself all the time either, so... But, like I said, that's some things, certain things that would have to come up for a vote as far as the plan as a whole, as just being a plan, I'm in favor of it.
I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of ignorant in the plan. I haven't, if we've been presented with a...
Steve Halter presented it that night.
I think you and I were out that night. That's the night, that's the one when my brother died. I know I was out during that time, and I, for me, as long as there's no monetary value that can, they can just go bilin' nilly with, with the city, they want to work a plan that they can come up with, where they come to us for whatever monetary situation that they have before they spend it, I'm fine with that.
Well, it would have to be approved by you all, because the monetary items in there aren't in this year's budget, or next year's budget, so...
Well, they start off with like $170,000, is what they were requesting, and that's in addition to the salary. And I just don't think we can lay off employees and support one area of town when we have...
I can't see that either, that's why I'm saying...
And so, I appreciate their hard work. It just can't happen this year, it can't happen right now. You can't, the public tells me that they don't want a dog park and then a layoff of police officer, and I can appreciate that. So, people don't want to spend money to tear down the parking garage, that solid concrete garage, when we have so many other things that that money could go for. So, I appreciate what they're trying to do... So I appreciate what they're trying to do, but I just don't feel that we can... One thing, we weren't gonna support that for beyond the four years, and now we're in year seven or eight, that we are supporting just one section of town. I mean, east side, south side, north side, all of them deserve, if, you know, a leadership or directive, we're gonna put money toward it, if they want to do it voluntarily, like it started out prior to us getting that grant, because the way it was designed in two thousand and nine is when we were, the governor awarded me, when I was mayor, is the Dream Initiative, we had a hundred thousand dollar grant that was a matching grant. So that's where the fifty thousand came from. We had to pay fifty thousand the first year, and the second year, the grant paid at the third year and the fourth year, and then they should have been self-sufficient at that point. And they haven't been. And when our city is hurting in so many other ways, because as they mentioned, they have twenty-five percent more to police. We also have that many more streets and fire protection and everything. I mean, we're just, we're kind of stressed, and I just don't feel like we can commit to that plan this year or right now. Maybe in six months, we can look at it again, but I personally just cannot. And I'm not against them. It's not personal. I just don't see how, we just have to prioritize, and I just don't see how we can do that.
I think what they did, though, didn't they come back and say that there's no monetary fund for seventeen at all?
I mean, there's nothing in the budget for the...
Twenty-five thousand for the salary.
For the salary.
But that's not...
Out of the tourism money.
That would come from...
That wouldn't be from the general fund situation.
Right, no, not this year. This year, it's from the tourism.
But there's, there's no money in there for tearing down the parking garage or any of those other items that were in there, so...
That was a big one that people cornered me on.
Mayor, members of the county, I just want to speak on behalf of the board. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but just because of all the concerns, our main reason in having you approve any part of it, we understand that the slogan is an issue, and we'd hate for the rest of our plan to go out because of that. The part of the salary that the city is paying is not affecting anyone, any other city employee's salary.
And I want the public to be aware of that.
And I want them to be aware of that. I don't want any employee to be laid off to benefit downtown or myself. But the one thing that we would, I would like to see passed tonight, or at least approved by you all, is the dog park. We know that the trash cans are, it was a twenty-eight-hundred dollar that we asked for the city. We're okay to take that expense or to leave it for next year. We realize the things we put in there about different buildings being added to possibly be rehabbed or demolished, and the parking garage and different things that were in there were all suggestions and ideas, and it's a five-year plan, not a two thousand and seventeen plan. So I hope you all realize that as well. But I'm working on a grant right now for the dog park, and in order to move further with that for January first, I have to know that that land is secured for us to be able to do something with. If not, then pretty much my entire, the entire plan is on hold.
The concern of people would tell me, and I have a list of the people, should you ever need to know. But they would, one of the things is that area floods, and they hated to see fifty thousand dollars put toward a dog park, and then the river rises and washes it all out.
As far as I know, and I've talked to multiple people, that area that it's going in has never flooded.
Okay.
Which area are you planning for it to go in?
It's going over by the basketball courts, over by Wiseman Park.
Really? Close family?
It's on the other side.
On the other side?
Yes. I think it's like five to seven acres. Dennis took me down there last week. And so we're just looking at taking two acres on the side closest to the tracks, closest to the train depot.
I'm surprised it's never been underwater. I'm just telling you what the citizens are telling me.
I've been to Farmington, and they opened theirs in August. I talked with the Parks and Rec maintenance crew there who put theirs in. I asked if they had any issues, and they said that it actually went over better than they had expected. I went on a Thursday afternoon, and there was two different citizens there on a Thursday afternoon at one o'clock bringing their pets.
Well, I do get a lot of feedback for people wanting a dog park, absolutely. I mean, that's, there's more for that than the people that didn't want it there. But the concern was just the flooding. But if, if you're sure that it's never been there, they just hate to see money be put into it and then it be washed away.
And just so everyone knows, it wouldn't be the city's money, you know, they don't...
We want to be clear on that.
Yes, it would be in-kind, hopefully, that different things the city could do for us as far as maybe mowing or things along that way as maintenance. But as far as the fencing and bringing it here, it would all be part of a grant or monetary donations from the community.
But there is a need for a dog park, and there is a desire for it. I agree with that. I think the location is the main thing that, that most of the concern was. So it's just hard to, to adopt that as a whole, but if it's something we can go back and revisit, um...
Yes, and everything that we would do, you know, I know that though, changing the one-way streets to two-way streets, that's something that we would...
That's another huge one.
Yes, that we would come to you for. So it's more so, and if you want, you know, like Ed said tonight, take out the slogan. We're fine with that. We can come up with something different. So if you pass it and say, "We're okay with giving you this land for the dog park, but any other item listed here, please come to us for further consent." We're okay with that, too. I just, as a director, have to have some, some direction.
We don't actually give it to you. It would just be...
Right, just I have to have...
For your use, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we can't give it to you, I don't think.
And I think it needs to be stressed that none of the money's coming from the city, because even my dog lover friends have said, "You best not vote for a dog park if you're gonna cut anybody's job."
Yep. No, we're not asking for any money from the city minus the twenty-five thousand that you guys are giving. That is not coming from general revenue, so... Any other questions?
Can I just ask for clarification, Jerika? When you apply for this grant, you don't have to have evidence by virtue of an ordinance saying that we have committed to the use of the land. You just have to say that the city is supportive of providing land to us for this use. Is that right?
We just have to have land secured.
Does it have to come concurrent with the application filing itself? You have to make a statement in there that the, the city agrees in principle to provide the land?
Yes, so I just told her that I could provide minutes showing that.
So if we just have by informal consensus here that, with the caveat that the city's not spending any GR money, which you clearly are not asking for, matching or otherwise, and of course, subject to the, the grant reviewers satisfying themselves that it's not going to be in a floodway. If you just had a consensus of the council here tonight, then you could honestly and accurately prepare and file that grant. Is that right?
That's correct.
And that's really all you're asking for, at least immediately, and then the other things will come up.
We can come throughout the year.
Piecemeal and ad hoc as they come along.
Yes.
And with that caveat, I, you know, I have no problem at all by consensus authorizing the use of the land, not the conveyance of the land, of course, for that purpose.
Do you have to give the address of it, or just that you have use of land?
Just use of land.
So if that, that particular location doesn't work due to flooding or something, and we do guarantee that we will give you use of land somewhere for your park, do you have to have the address on your application?
No. I just have to have, it requests that it's one acre per size that we do, and we're looking at a small and a large and medium size. So we're looking at two acres, and so I've been in contact with a company that we're looking at doing the grant with, and all she, all she has specified to me is that she just needs something from the city, if that be minutes or an email from Mark or council or any, something written showing that we have secured use of land. Doesn't, doesn't have to be a specific address. The further we get into the process, I will need to have paperwork drawn out and designs and so forth.
And the application has to be in by January one, so you have to have it tonight?
I don't have to have it tonight. It was just, we were here this evening, and this was on last council's agenda, so that's the only reason that we were...
Sure.
If not, I just kind of stand still, because this is our biggest project right now. I have plenty other things to do, and if you guys want to think about it and get back to us, that's fine.
If they, if you're only asking for us to approve that we will give them use of some of the city's land for a dog park and not that whole project in unison, I can agree. The rest of it, we have budget. We have way more things to deal with than that right now. I'm sorry. Because she's really not asking for the entire five-year plan. You're only asking for the dog park.
That's what we're saying. It's, this is our idea. The strategic plan is our five-year idea, just like they had a ten-year idea. This is what we hope to accomplish in five years, and this is what we hoped we could do this year, but we understand it's a tight budget, and I've even explained that to the lady that I'm working with on the grant, that no funds are coming from the city, and this is all on us.
And this is not a revenue-producing. This will just be a service.
That's correct. It's free to all citizens.
Is it something that would ever go under the park department? They're gonna have, I mean, this, it gets more complicated. I'm sorry. I asked questions.
That was my question, too.
I mean, there's just too many questions here. I can't just...
I don't know if Jerika's talked to Mr. Allen or not about park department, but...
I mean, we've spoke, and I was really nice to him, but I don't know. We haven't really gotten that far. We're just in the pre-planning stages of it, so...
I could say we could probably find, I mean, I'm thinking of some of the flood buyout land. There's probably some land that we could give use for a dog park, but then with that comes other questions, and you just hate to commit, this is serious stuff up here. You just hate to commit to something until we know all the...
I don't think she's asking for it.
But I believe what Mrs. Richardson just explained, that we can consent to that.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
I think that there is a need. We can find two acres somewhere.
But the blanket that this started off with, I think...
If that's all she needs is consentably...
She's not asking for a specific piece of land.
I think there's enough people in Papa Bluff that want that.
But that's not the way it started off with the conversation.
We've made it very clear. It's not gonna cost us any money, and it's, it's gonna be all...
We're not gonna lay off a policeman or a fireman or a street worker.
I do question when you start talking in-kind mowing and maintenance and stuff like that, that comes...
And then...
That creates a budget.
Well, I was under the impression that the street department already mows that land. Is that correct?
That's true.
So, I mean, it would be...
It's gonna change.
But I, I would think there would be a lot of support from the animal and the animal club and stuff. I mean...
People call.
We've already had one meeting, and it was huge. We have a lot of support for it.
There's gonna be volunteers and stuff that...
There is support, but they just want to make sure we're not laying off their employees.
Right.
No worries there.
And I think we've made that very clear.
And it just gets mixed up.
And downtown doesn't want to see us lose. I hope people understand that, that we're not trying to do things to better downtown and by doing so, trying to fire employees. That's not our intention. If we don't have the employees, we don't have downtown, so...
Just how it gets twisted by the time it gets three generations out there.
Right, right. So we're not asking for money. We can take the slogan out, no problem. We're just asking if there was any way that we could have use of at least two acres.
In a slogan, I would really like to see something that says something about Papa Bluff. I mean, besides that we haven't, I mean, you take out the word and all that, it needs to have something besides. We could come up with something better than we just have an event every month. I know that that needs to be, you're trying to market that or whatever, make that clear that we have this event, but it seems like there's something with all of our history and everything, or something we could say about Papa Bluff's downtown besides that we have an event every month.
Well, any ideas, I will gladly take. Because it's not as easy as it sounds, because I've been racking my brain over it, so... All right, thank you.
I'll agree with Phil and Ed. I've had a lot of comments about the so-called name, you know.
I have, too.
And I'll agree with you all on that, and I think we can find a piece of property they can use in the city. We've got several buyout areas, you know.
That's what I was thinking of, too. That doesn't flood.
Flood buyout, didn't they, but flood, so...
Some of it doesn't, but I know it's kind of, it's just...
Okay.
What do we need to do to get this?
It, it sounds like if you want to boil it down to the specific request that the city will make a commitment to find two acres of land somewhere within the city of Papa Bluff that is appropriate without cost to the general revenue or the general budget, then I, I think by consensus with the roll call vote, you can give support to the downtown development group to go forward with that grant.
Not the, not the presentation in its entirety, just...
No, what I just said. I think we boil it down to that one. We boil it down to the dogs.
That's right. That's right. Just want to make sure.
We're down to the dogs, and if, if you all are in agreement and consensus that the city is prepared to provide at no cost to its budget, two acres of land for the development of a dog park at the expense of downtown development and/or any grants that they may be able to raise, or other private funds that they may be able to raise, then that's something you can do by a simple consensus vote here tonight.
I think there's been a motion, positive talks, that the consensus has already been stated. Anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.